April 19, 6:00 P. M. This meeting is called to order. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide the alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary during the meeting. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Joden?
Here.
City Manager Harlow Schalk?
Here.
Commissioner Halliday?
Here.
Commissioner Dean?
Here.
Commissioner Logan?
Here.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The minutes for 7:13, 20 regular City Commission Meeting, 8:24, 20 regular Commission Meeting, and 8:30, 1:20 Special Commission Meeting were received. Do we have any comments or questions? Additions? If not, it will be received as submitted. Consent agenda claims. Ms. Hall, show.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Mayor, I recommend you entertain a motion for consent to approve claims in the amount of $587,613.13 from April 8th and 9th, 2021.
Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll move.
I'm sorry, Commissioner. I see we have to give a minute for public comments. Any comments from the public on this issue? On this topic? Okay, I'll entertain the motion.
I'll move claims for approval.
Second.
Any final discussion? If not, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Bid award. A Rodney Street Reconstruction Bid Award Transportation System Director, Director Knopki.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, we have the bid award for the Rodney Street Phase One Reconstruction. This phase is between Broadway and Ninth. It was rebid on March 11th of 2021. The reconstruction includes curb and gutter sidewalk, streets, water, water and sewer mains from Broadway to Ninth. The existing signal at Sixth Avenue will be removed with this project, and a flash and beacon at Eighth will be replaced with a rapid flashing beacon similar to the ones you see at the crossing at Benton. Tonight, we would like you to consider awarding the Rodney Street Phase One Reconstruction Project, City Project 1939, to Helena Sand and Gravel in the amount of $2,616,696. This project will replace the aging utility infrastructure and the aging street and provide a better driving surface for all modes of transportation. So our recommended motion tonight is recommended the award of the Rodney Street Reconstruction Project in the amount of $2,616,696, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Knopki. Any comments or questions from the Commission?
Mayor, I have one question.
Please go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Knopki and maybe for the City Manager, one of you. So I'm looking at page six of our packet, the budget worksheet, which provides what we budgeted and out of what fund and then what the estimated cost is and what that will be budgeted to. I'm just curious if there, depending on how things go with the federal funds that the city may receive, is there conversation about reallocating Rodney to potentially some of the federal funds that we get? I mean, I know we're still waiting for exactly what that would look like and how the funds can be used, but is that on the table for potentially using some of the federal funds for Rodney?
Mayor and Commissioners, yes, that's that would be a project that we would consider for those federal funds. But we have the, you know, like you said, the definition of those funds hasn't been fully vetted and but we have the project ready to go and funded so that we can get started on the construction as soon as possible.
If I may, Mayor?
Go ahead. Ms. Hall, shock.
Thank you. Always want to be cautious of supplanting. One of the concerns with the federal dollars is supplanting something that has already been budgeted for. So that's why the requirements related to these new dollars are pretty significant and important. Supplanting, meaning if something's already budgeted, you cannot use it to cover what has already been budgeted unless there is a direct relationship to COVID. And that's always been up for conversation so that just to add a little pen and as to why we would be waiting, it's a concern about supplanting. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall, shock.
Mayor, City Manager, is there actually supplanting language provided in Section 9901 of ARPA?
Good question. Thank you, Commissioner O'Loughlin. As it relates to spending on federal spending dollars within CDBG, which has been the example used repeatedly for the Community Development Block Grant as the guidance for federal dollar spending, those are specifically not allowed. Supplanting is specifically not allowed. So as a city, the city this time around within these dollars will be required to validate and verify what is spent and how it's spent. So there is hesitation in making decisions early on without having more of those further details from the U.S. Treasury specific to these dollars.
Okay, great. Thank you. Because I mean, the the state is quite literally supplanting infrastructure funds, right, using these federal dollars. So I don't, I just want to, I just want to make sure that we're not preemptively deciding something before we actually know whether or not we can use the funds for it.
Yeah, but I would just, I would just echo that. I mean, we've got, we were told we could use at least some of the ARPA funds specifically for water and I believe wastewater, and we've got somewhere in the range of $1.3 million budgeted here for something in the range of 1.2, 1.25 million in those projects. If we can use federal dollars that are coming in on this project and move those other dollars elsewhere for critical needs in our system, we should definitely be doing that before we just go ahead and spend these.
Thank you, Ms. Hall, shock.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The use of federal dollars and the anticipation of strategy is something that is on our agenda and conversation next week from the team and the method of distribution and recommendations to you all in alignment with your strategic plan, as well as what you've outlined is on the table. There are two sets of funds related to water and sewer projects. The first is within ARPA. The first is the actual set aside from the U.S. Treasury specific to the city share. Then there's a second set of dollars for just water and sewer, which I believe is what Commissioner O'Loughlin was referring to. Those dollars specifically are up for discussion and they're, I'm very interested to hear more. I'm absolutely excited to have those opportunities for two sets of funds for those projects.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments from the Commission? Any public?
I'm sorry, I do have one more question for Director Knopki. And this kind of relates to both this and the second bid that we have on our agenda. I'm curious. This is just more your thoughts on sort of the competition for these projects and the fact that we only have one bid in for this project. Is that, is that surprising given that this is a pretty significant project for Helena? I mean, I'm just curious, like what what that's telling us about construction in the city of Helena and the extent to which, you know, we'll be able to get bids moving forward? I don't know if you have any thoughts or reaction to the fact that we only have one bid in?
Mayor and Commissioners, you know, we were hoping for additional bids to, you know, that what, that's what breeds that competitive nature. I have talked with other municipalities and they're seeing the same thing. And, you know, some projects, they're getting multiple bidders, some projects are getting one or two. So, you know, it's a little concerning for us as far as moving projects farther into the construction season on whether or not those will actually, you know, be able to get constructed with the limited construction season that we all know we have in Montana.
Any other comments from the Commission? Do you have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands and I've received no written public comment on this item.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'd move to award, move the award of the Rodney Street Phase One Reconstruction Projects, City Project Number 19-39 to a sand gravel in the amount of $2,616,696.
Second.
Any final discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just say that it's exciting to actually approve the bid in this project finally. It's, it's felt like about five years coming. People have been asking when Rodney was going to get done in this city for years. So it just goes to show how long it can take to get a project from zero to fully bid and then we'll cross our fingers it gets done sometime in the near future. But it's always something to keep in mind as you watch this over the years that this project was starting to be conceptualized four years ago, and we're probably going to see the end of it four or five years out. So always something to think about for anyone when we're talking about projects, how long these take, but really, really exciting to finally see it getting done.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other finer comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Bid award. Bravo. 2021 Chip and Seal Bid Award Transportation Director, Director Knopki.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The Chip Seal Project is to add a new wear service and pavement sealer by applying a single application of asphalt material followed by spreading three-eighth inch chip. We opened bids on this project on March 23rd, 2021. Helena Sand was the apparent lowest responsible bidder with schedules A through G in the total of $367,703.84, which approximately is $1.96 per square yard. Last year's price was about $1.75. That's, we're going to be seeing an increase in asphalt and other oils as the oil prices go up. This is our first indication. In addition, they're going to fog seal schedules A and B on Jocelyn and Brady. This is to, when we re-stripe it, the striping will be have a better contrast with the darker fog seal versus the gray of the chips. And then we're also awarding the or recommending award of sealing the transit parking lot in the amount of $9,750. We were, or we did do alternate one and two, which was a chip seal of the city shop and a double chip seal or double shot chip. The prices just came in a little bit more than what we had wanted to, so we're electing to not recommend that award. So tonight, staff recommends awarding the base bid plus additive alternate number three, which will complete approximately 10 miles of city streets. Last year, we did approximately 11. 2019, we did 19.8, but we had, we had had two years of chip seal money in there to do that amount. So we're going pretty much on our average about 10 miles a year. So tonight, we recommend award of the 2021 Chip Seal Project Number TSD 32 with additive alternate number three to the lowest responsibility bidder, Helena Sand and Gravel in the amount of $414,781.79.
Thank you, Director. Any comments or questions for the Director?
Just one quick question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
For Director Knopki, I know last year it was really interesting when I got to go out and watch them do it. I'm curious. That was in, I think, late July. Will this take all summer or when, when do you start with that schedule A and then moving through?
So we're anticipating starting in mid-July and the total chip seal project should take about two weeks. The fog seal will take a little bit longer because we let that initial asphalt oil cure out for a number of days, and then we come back with the fog seal, and then we'll come back after that. So with the striping, so the initial, the biggest bulk of the project will be about two weeks. And then after that, it will just be a couple of days for them to finish it, the fog seal up.
Thank you.
Any other comments for, a question for Director Knopki? Do you have any public comments for this, on this topic? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment at this time.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to award the 2021 Chip Seal Project Number TSD 32 with additive alternate number three to the lowest responsible bidder, Helena Sand and Gravel in the amount of $414,781.79.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean? Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Communications proposals from the Committee, from the Commission? Okay, moving along. Report of the City Attorney.
Mayor Collins, Commissioners, nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Report of the City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, just quick up, a couple of quick updates and points. Just wanted to remind the community that administrative meetings like was held last week are where we study issues and receive consensus on direction for the team. Last week, the Commissioner arrived at consensus that e-bikes are motorized and prohibited from use as noted in Helena's City Code related to natural parks as well by land deed. It does not prohibit the use of those bikes on city streets and sidewalks. Want to also underscore this does not override ADA compliance requirements. We do recognize an exception in the City Code related to a 2011 Department of Justice rule. Those rules provide that individuals with a mobility disability are allowed to use city trails that are open to the public with the assistance of a motor-driven mobility device if they can provide credible assurance that the device is being used for a mobility disability. And the city has not completed an analysis of the trail that deems it non-conducive to such use. I know we've received several questions, and again, the consensus was around the determination of those being motorized within our current City Code. It does not override, though, ADA rules or requirements. With regard to other items this week, Civic Pride and Spring Cleanup received a couple of emails and questions around a reminder to everyone to please clear off their sidewalks and also begin to clean up and have some civic pride in the community. It's also Earth Month, for lack of a better way of summarizing, both Earth Day and Arbor Day are in this month. So you'll see a series of articles and information on tips for recycling, yard cleanup, and then there will be an Arbor Day Tree Event replacing our lost tree out in front of the Civic Center. So more to come on that front soon. You've also seen the publication of business assistance information pending completion of a survey on Be Heard Helena. May 5th, we'll have an open house, which is really a summary of what we learned through that surveying on Be Heard, and anyone who is in the business community can come by and learn more about what we have heard from them on how we can support them between the reacting to, to living with COVID if they were to receive funding through either general fund savings this year as a result of COVID funding that was provided to cover our operations, or if there is funding in the next round that could be made available by the city, what those businesses could be interested in receiving support from. We'll also do the same with our nonprofit community to find out what gaps they may need as well filling between their two, these two federal fund allocations. So we have a good understanding of the kinds of needs in the community. Next week, as I shared, we'll be coming to talk about an approach that helps provide a method for responding to these new dollars as they come in. Also, at that May 5th open house, I've been invited Alexa Norak, who is our new disaster and emergency specialist over in Lewis and Clark County, along with those from the Public Health Team who may be able to provide assistance to our businesses if they have questions. I've also invited the Chamber, our business community partners, including the Chamber, Downtown BID, Downtown Helena, Inc., and MBAC. We will be launching our recruitment tools soon as well. We've received the the videos from our contract with Sovereign, who have completed a look at what it's like to do business in Helena so that when businesses look to moving into our community, they have an idea of the kind of support and kind of community we are. And then last, I wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Halliday for pointing out the duration of time it takes. I think it's a really valid point with regard to these larger projects, and we're really excited this year to have a really construction year, a busy construction year ahead of us. One of the larger items of note within our budget process is the CIP program and the Capital Improvement Program. We'll be spending the next several months working with the Commission on the drafted budget as well, the proposed budget that I'll be submitting. Prior to that, though, it's a really important conversation to you, with you all around fiscal stability. And as what I've shared with you all in my recent conversations with you, stability is not only having money, but how you use it and knowing how to use it. So the Capital Improvement Program that we are talking about would include such things as these larger projects like Rodney. That can take years to build in the funding for. Those are the kinds of tools that the city has not had, but I am excited to share. We, we do anticipate spending about five and a half million this year in this, this construction season, not only on the two projects that Director Knopki has cited in this bid award tonight, but also on projects that are citywide intended to help like the Six Ward Slip, Trip and Fall Hazard repairs for $200,000, Benton Turn Lanes, Benton Path. Also, there's some work at our tennis courts at the McKenna Park and Mount Helena, North Face Forest Fuels Reduction. That's a pretty significant project itself, and it is an improvement project because it is preventive. The same, there's a Capital 360 Forest Fuels Maintenance. We're going to be busy this summer with a variety of projects, and there's even more on the public works side. So I just wanted to underscore the level of effort and the time it takes us. So it's important to have that stability that comes with the leadership. So I'm excited to be here through these planning projects and putting into motion some really good expectations and priorities with the team and working with you all. With that, I will let you know that's the end of my update for tonight, Mayor.
Comments or questions for the City Manager? Thank you. Communications from Helena Citizens Council?
Thank you, Mayor Collins and Commissioners. This is Dylan Klatmeyer, the Helena Citizens Council Chairman. Appreciate the City Manager's update. The HCC has discussed e-bikes on Helena's public trails quite a bit. And we've had a lot of public input at our meetings on the topic, so we did share all of the information that we've received from the public with all of you. And we know that this is just the start and that it's going to be an ongoing discussion about what the role of e-bikes are on Helena's trails. So we look forward to staying engaged on that. And then on her other update with the Be Heard Helena website, we are really happy with that. That's a great outlet for members of the public to be able to give input on city projects. So we've been promoting that website and will continue to do so. The April HCC meeting is next Wednesday, the 28th, and that will be through Zoom at 7:00. Of course, you're all welcome to join as well as any members of the public. Our main presenters this month will be the City Manager and the Finance Director. Just hoping to get an update on where the city budgeting process is. We did form a budget committee as we're charged with doing under the City Charter to be involved with the city budgeting process and review the budget and make recommendations to you. So we'll, we'll do that again this year and look forward to the opportunity to present our recommendations to you. And beyond that, we'll also probably briefly discuss the new federal ARPA funds and hope to be involved and make some recommendations on the use of those federal ARPA funds as well. So that is all I have for the HCC. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Klatmeyer. Any questions or comments for Mr. Klatmeyer?
Right.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Question for Mr. Klatmeyer. Dylan, can you remind those in the public listening where, where to find your website and are you present on social media as well?
Of course. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Logan. Helenacitizenscouncil.com is our website and our coordinator posts, she'll be posting the meeting agenda and Zoom link on that website this week. We always post it a week ahead of time. And then we are also on Facebook. Again, just Facebook, Helenacitizens Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klatmeyer. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Questions? All right. Thank you. Regular items. Consider adoption of five-point intersection study. Ms. Hall, shock and Director Knopki?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. We have our consultant ready to give you a short 10-minute presentation on the highlights of the study that it went through. That's been through very numerous public engagement processes and looking and talking with stakeholders. They looked at how to best flow both non-motorized and vehicular traffic through this study area. And this study will act as a supplemental resource to the adopted Helena area long-range transportation plan. And with that, I would like to turn this over to Scott Randall with RPA, the consultant that came up with this plan.
You have the floor, Mr. Randall.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, David and Mayor and Commissioners for having me here today. So my name again is Scott Randall, and I'm the project manager for this study. I'm with the consulting firm Robert Peshin Associates here in Helena. So I have a brief presentation this evening, touching on the highlights of the traffic study and a summary of the public and stakeholder feedback we've received so far. So real quick, let me first reiterate the boundaries for the study. Our efforts focused primarily on the two five-point intersections. Those are Last Chance Gull, Last Chance Gull, Helena Avenue. Those are Last Chance Gull, Last Chance Gull, Helena Avenue and Neal Avenue Downtown and Lindale, Montana and Helena Avenue in the Sixth Ward area. So we also, in addition to looking at those primary intersections, we also evaluated four corridor segments connecting the downtown and the midtown areas. Those included Last Chance Gull, Lindale Avenue, Helena Avenue and Montana Avenue. And we're also tasked with looking at improvements and ways to improve connectivity of Centennial Trail. So our primary focus was on identifying ways to improve the intersections and connecting corridors to provide for better access, mobility and safety for all users. So one of the main goals of the study was to ensure that we involve the public and stakeholders throughout the process. This actually began way back during our initial scoping of the study before we even defined what this process would look like. We had about 40 people participate in those initial scoping meetings to provide their inputs on what they hope to get out of the study. We used that feedback to craft the scope and purpose of the study. And moving into the development process, we held two public informational meetings, one of which we conducted in person by appointment only due to COVID protocols and one of which was held virtually through Zoom during multiple time slots. So we had about 30 to 40 people attend each of those informational meetings, which was a great turnout. And in addition to the public, we held many stakeholder meetings and met with various groups such as businesses, schools, neighborhoods, mobility interest groups and the Department of Transportation. So in total, we had about 23 written formal comments submitted through this process and dozens of other informal comments and conversations throughout the process. So from these activities, there were seven, several common themes emerged related to the study and those spoke to improving facilities to enhance safety for all users, improving vehicular and non-motorized connectivity, ensuring access to neighborhoods and businesses, improving mobility and mode choice for all users, including those with disabilities, and the need for beautification and street scape and enhancements to increase the appeal of certain areas. So based on these findings and the feedback we received, we identified 15 locations for recommended improvements. Recommendations ranged from pedestrian, bicycle and general non-motorized improvements to intersection improvements, street enhancements, more major reconstruction recommendations. In some spots, there was a clear-cut solution to address the needs and in others, we identified several potential improvements and conducted a screening process to identify what was the best. Our intent was to identify a range of both shorts and long-term recommendations that can be development, developed as funding allows going forward. So I'll touch briefly on the recommendations for the main focus areas of the five-point intersections, Last Chance Gull and Centennial Trail. So first, starting off with Last Chance Gull, we were tasked with evaluating if the existing one-way segment downtown should be converted for two-way traffic or if its current configuration should remain in place. So two-way, I'm sure you're well aware of a two-way traffic has been contemplated for many years in the downtown. And the study was tasked with figuring out the best solution to optimize business access and traffic circulation. So we looked at a variety of configurations in detail and what we found is that most options perform pretty well from a traffic standpoint. However, the existing configuration provides valuable access for, for business parking, loading and delivery needs, and that modifying the existing roadway from what it is today would be very costly to implement. We also, when we went out to the public and stakeholders, did not receive a lot of strong support for converting to two-way traffic or any other of the configurations that we were looking at. So based on this evaluation and feedback we received, we're recommending that the current one-way configuration be maintained and that you look for other opportunities to enhance what is already out there. This would be a more cost-effective solution to improve upon what is on the ground today and would not require full reconstruction. So there are some great opportunities to extend some of the street scape and elements that are out there, particularly in the area between Placer and Neal. This would really help provide a better gateway feeling into the downtown core and create a more, more uniformity along the corridor. So moving to the downtown five-point intersection. So this was another primary focus area of the traffic study. Again, we spent a lot of time evaluating some of the concerns and challenges at the intersection. We heard from a lot of community members and business owners about this location. Well, again, the intersection operates fairly well strictly for vehicles. There are periods with congestion. NAST traffic increases over time. This is of course expected to get worse. The intersection is also very inefficient due to the signal timing and it's not particularly friendly or easy to use for pedestrians and bicyclists. So from a recommendation standpoint, we identified a short-term recommendation to remove the pedestrian in right-turn refuge islands along crews and better align this leg of the intersection. The right-turn lane is not needed from a traffic standpoint and removing it would allow for better accommodations for pedestrians and shorter crossing distances. Over the long term, we identified a single lane roundabout as the preferred long-term configuration. This option would optimize vehicular operations, would work well for non-motorized access and would offer the opportunity for the intersection to serve as a gateway feature into the downtown. This option would also allow for the 11th Avenue spur to be closed, which would provide for a great opportunity to enhance and better utilize cruise park. So at this preliminary level, we also believe that this configuration would still maintain most business access points and function as it is today. Moving to the second five-point intersection on Highway 12, again, the intersection generally operates fairly well for vehicles, albeit with quite a bit higher traffic volume than the intersection downtown and some increased congestion during peak periods such as at five o'clock. The signal phasing does create some inefficiencies and the intersection is noted as a barrier for non-motorized users. It is also a barrier in general for the Sixth Ward area since left turns coming off of Lindale from the west onto Helena Avenue and onto Montana Avenue are currently prohibited. So this creates some challenges to access the areas to the east. And if you're not familiar with the area, it's, it's unclear coming from Lindale how to access those areas. So as with the downtown intersection, we studied a range of options and looked at the pros and cons of each. What we found was that again, the roundabout configuration was shown to best balance the, the operational and access needs at the intersection, although not without some challenges for implementation. The, the configuration is, is fairly costly as one would expect. It's a major construction project and would have a bit of a larger footprint than what is out there today. So we definitely heard a range of opinions about this intersection, more so than probably any other of the locations we looked at with this study. Some believe that the traffic operates fairly well at the intersection and, and don't think we should make any changes from what's out there today, while others believe that the intersection improvements should be a high priority for the city and that the current configuration is a major barrier for developments, in particular of the Sixth Ward area. Opinions were also mixed on the idea of a roundabout at this location with some vocal opposition and some strong support shown for the roundabouts. One common, shared comment that we did hear with regards to the intersection was opposition to closing any of the Helena Avenue legs regardless of configurations that we might look at. We also commonly heard that the intersection again is quite a, quite a barrier for pedestrians and bicyclists in the area. Moving on to the last main focus area is Centennial Trail. Currently, if you're familiar with it, the trail ends pretty abruptly at National Avenue just to the east of Kendrick Field and Memorial Park. The study was tasked with finding the best route for crossing Montana Avenue and continuing the trail to the east. So we looked at several options, including routing further to the north or further to the south and ultimately to maintain the feel and comfort of a shared use path meant for families and to minimize out of direction travel. The study recommends routing the trail along Argyle Streets and providing a new enhanced crossing near the Bozeman Street intersection with Montana Avenue. So this connection would allow the trail to continue to the east towards Speedy Park, where further routing decisions could be made to ultimately connect at the other termini points over to the east of I-15 at California Streets. We heard a lot of strong support in the need for extending Centennial Trail to the east across Montana Avenue. We know that that, that road and that connection is a major barrier for those wanting to use the trail. Commenters also noticed the importance of providing non-motorized connectivity to the Helen Avenue or to Helen Avenue, the downtown area and the Sixth Ward neighborhood. So with that, that's all I have for you this evening. Thanks for having me here. We're excited about the study and the recommendations and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Question or comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I have a few questions.
Please go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. So my first one, these are not related questions. So I'll just give you the first one and then we can come back. So I'm just curious, you know, in Helena, we don't really have a lot of experience with pedestrians and bicyclists and roundabouts. And I'm wondering, maybe you can talk about how they do or don't improve, you know, folks' ability to get through an intersection and, and also in terms of safety.
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor and Commissioners. It's a great question and something we, we hear commonly about roundabouts, especially in heavily utilized pedestrian areas. Regarding the one, you know, I'll start downtown, a fairly simple, single-lane roundabout, pedestrians, bicyclists. You know, they're, they're pretty easy to, to get through the intersection. Pedestrians would cross as you would at any other intersection. With a signalized intersection, of course, you push a button, you get a walk sign and you go. With a roundabout, it puts a little more of the, the onus on the pedestrian to stop and make sure a vehicle stops for them. They would cross one leg and get to the refuge island in the middle and then wait for another vehicle to stop and then cross the other leg. By law, the vehicles are required to stop for pedestrians. But with a roundabout, with that instance, there would not be a flasher or a red light telling the vehicles to stop. So we'd have signage telling them that they're required to stop for pedestrians. Bicyclists can do one of two things. They can either ride through it as a vehicle normally would and go through the roundabout that way, or they could dismount their bike and use the sidewalk as a pedestrian would. So that's kind of for a more simplistic, single-lane roundabout. As we get to more complicated situation, situations such as on Highway 12, if we were to have multiple legs, we would look at providing some type of signalization, whether that's a full-blown signal or a push-button activated. RRFB is, is you talked about earlier, there's different kinds of indications that we could use, but the point is we, when you, when a pedestrian has to cross, cross more than one lane at a time at a roundabout, we want to have a little more protection for them than just a yield sign or a stop sign for, for vehicles.
That's helpful. My next question is, and I don't know if you're the best person to answer this or maybe Mr. Knopki too. So I know obviously Centennial Trail is something that I hear about all the time and I'm wondering if someone can maybe give a brief history or more information about what the holdup has continued to be in completing it. Whether that's just funding or, or, and I know, you know, in the report, it talks a lot about deciding there's a recommendation of which route to, to go, but I'm, I'm just curious about what the holdup has been in getting that completed.
Mayor Commissioners, I'll take that one. So initially, we were using CTF funds, which were funding through MDT that they allowed the local municipal entities to administer themselves following some, you know, regulations that they stipulated. So, you know, that got the initial the piece that's out by Jocelyn and then the piece from Centennial Park to National. That entire leg from east to west was bid and looked at, but unfortunately the funding wasn't there. So since then, since the last project, which was Jocelyn, the CTF funds had been removed from, by MDT and replaced with transportation alternative funds. The TA funds now require a competitive basically process where municipalities will submit applications of their projects that they want done. And then MDT grades the projects on whatever their criteria are that year and awards the money accordingly. So, you know, not having the CTF funds, those funds were pretty much dedicated to, you know, building trails. But when they were converted to the TA funds, now we have to go out competitively with other cities to compete for those funds. Another issue that came up with the Centennial Trail is the construction and of the Sixth Ward Garden area and then the revitalization of the Sixth Ward. There's, there's a few, there's the, the master plan lays out a pathway that did not consider the transit or the Sixth Ward Garden and that revitalization of the Sixth Ward. So we felt that a relook at the master plan through some of those areas to bring the trail by some of those areas to just enhance public knowledge of the areas and, and then they can go through and see the history that we have and the new, the new features we have in that area. We were pretty close to getting the Centennial Trail master plan revisit or the revision funded. And then there was some concerns with the two groups that were, were going to fund that and we took a step back. So in a nutshell, we're still moving forward. We do believe that the master plan, which I believe was, is fairly old at this point, needs to be relooked at so that we can bring the most or bring people through those amenities that the, the city and other areas of the city have, have erected. And, you know, through the, the original study, the original intent was to bring pedestrians through the major five-point intersection across three crossings of, of roadways to get them basically into the Sixth Ward. You know, that was challenging back then, not great. And I think now we have a chance to relook at that, reprioritize and then look for funding to further complete the trail.
Okay. So I, I have one more question after this, but I, just to follow up on that. So I guess when moving forward with an updated master plan, that would, once we adopt, if we, if and when we adopt this study today, I would assume that would be informed by the recommendations that are within this that include, I know in here it recommends that, I think it's alternative B, Argyle Street with crossing at Bozeman Street. That would inform whatever an updated master plan would be. Is that accurate?
Mayor Commissioners, that's correct. They would take this study and, and look at it. And, you know, always with studies, they, during design, we look at, I'm a little bit more detailed into it. But that would be that section. And then the additional update of the master plan would look at connecting basically the intersection of Roberts there and Bozeman and taking it over to California, which there are a few different routes. And the one other thing that I failed to mention before, one of the barriers to completing the Jocelyn to Benton portion was redoing our agreement with MRL of the easement and moving the easement for the trail to the south edge of their property. So that is in MRL's hands and we've been told that they're going to sign it any day now. We haven't seen anything, but we're hoping that that comes soon so that we can, again, get that on our, our CIP list.
Okay, that's really helpful. And Mr. Mayor, I just have one final question. And this has to do with MDT's written comments that were in, I think it was in the appendix in the back and the comments were interesting and I think this is for Mr. Randall, but I'm, you know, in there, it talks about their system impact action process. And it talks about, you know, there's a lot of, if we're going to do any of this, they need to have more. There need to be more conversations, I guess. And I'm just wondering, you know, looking at the, at the end of the study, when it talks about, you know, what are the next steps? And in step two, it talks about the, the city and state process and then going to outreach and collaboration and design. And I'm just wondering, you know, what what are our next steps to make sure that the investments we're making are reflective of what our community wants while still also, you know, having to work with MDT. And I don't know, you know, please let me know what you think and if Mr. Knopki has more to anxious to hear.
Yeah, Mayor Commissioners, I mean, that's a good question. I mean, I think it comes with any planning project. I mean, we can have recommendations and ideas, but it all comes down to implementation. One of the stakeholders, I mean, we, we worked with MDT, you know, quite a bit throughout this. We did revise some of our initial recommendations based on some of their, their concerns. So we do feel like we, our recommendations are implementable. That doesn't mean there aren't always challenges, right? But we do, we did work with them and tried to make sure that, you know, their concerns were addressed and, and we're, you know, understanding their role and everything. Of course, Highway 12, I mean, they have control over that as they do Montana Avenue. And so anything that happens along those corridors needs to go through their process. The system impacts process specifically is related to, you know, any impacts due to development or changes that would impact the highway system and what their control is. So if there's new development that occurs and, and that changes or anything happens there that would have impacted the, the highway specific to some of the intersections or access points, it would have to go through their process, approval process. But I think, you know, with, with anything that starts, it needs to start with the plan and having community supports at the local level and buy-off, I think gives you a lot more, better legs to stand on going forward to, to try to implement something. But again, we didn't do this in a vacuum and just, you know, say that these are recommendations without talking with them. And we wanted to make sure that hopefully, you know, doesn't make sense to put something out there that can't happen either. So hopefully, we're at a good place and can move forward with these two.
That's helpful. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
So, Mr. Mayor, so following up on that, Mr. Randall, when we, when we started talking about this study for the first time. I want to say it was like 2017, and MDT was in the room and basically said, you know, if you guys want to fix that five-point intersection. We recognize the city thinks it's a barrier to economic development. It's incredibly unfriendly for non-motorized transportation. It doesn't work for Centennial Trail. But we think it works as an intersection. We're not going to let you guys go crazy with it and turn it into something that's going to stop interstate commercial traffic. And so part of the goal here, we just ended up saying, we're going to, we're going to put this study out there. And the city will see what it costs and bring us back something that is implementable. That MDT is going to bless with, we'll say, MDT's relative level of obstruction and interference with the project. And maybe if, if a commission was willing to pull the trigger on it, seven years was the number that we were given. So, you know, getting out your crystal ball, which I know you have under your desk there. If we looked at a project like the Highway 12 one and said, go. Are we looking at a seven-year timeline at this point?
You know, Mayor Commissioners, that's definitely a tough one, you know, obviously, I wish I had the perfect crystal ball. But I can tell you my conversations with MDT were similar to what you just mentioned. For the, for their purpose, and that is functioning highway system that, that works, you know, from a highway standpoint, which is mostly vehicular driven. The intersection generally works okay, you know, because it prioritizes movements on Highway 12. It talked about, you know, the left turns that you can't take off of Lindale. Well, that doesn't affect the highway performance. It actually makes the highway perform better because you're restricting those movements, and that's why those restrictions are in place. And so to ask MDT specifically to prioritize funding to pay for an improvement such as that. I can tell you it's not on their radar based on the conversations I've had with them. I think it would, your best chance would be to, you know, have a community driven or locally driven. And whether that means a partial funding standpoint, looking at grant opportunities, or whatever it might be. That's probably your best bet to get, getting something implemented, in my opinion. I think what this also does is can tie to a bigger discussion that hasn't been mentioned yet, and that's the railroad crossing on Montana Avenue. I think that's long been a thorn in everybody's side. We all know that's a challenging crossing, and it's one of the highest priorities in the states. Or the highest traffic volumes for an at-grade crossing in the states. And so I do think there, there comes a point in time where, you know, that, that has to be looked at. And so whether those two things get looked at together, because they are in close proximity, and whether that makes the most sense. Or, you know, whether looking at something bigger picture with, you know, going after build grants or whatever it might be. You might have to think a little bit outside the box then, waiting for MDT to come and pony up money to fix this intersection.
Well, and I, I mean, at least for me, these other folks were lucky enough to not be there. When we, you know, when we started talking about this process, the expectation was MDT would never come with any money for these projects. They made it pretty clear at that meeting that they didn't see this as a monetary priority. And so a lot of these discussions circled around getting something that you all would say is, you know, doable. That MDT has given some implicit blessing to, and then it really falls on the city's shoulders to locate that money. To get it rolling, because it was understood that MDT just didn't really care whether these projects necessarily go. And at this time, maybe they'll change their mind in the future, but these are not priorities. And so anything over on that Highway 12 corridor had, had to be the city's, the city's dollar or the county's dollar. Maybe some federal money if we could find it, but not to expect state funds to come in. So one other area that I was interested in that you didn't talk about was the location on Ewing. And crossing Highway 12 there. And I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit about that and your thoughts and recommendations.
Yeah, so it's, you know, it's a great one, and it's one of the areas we got commented on quite a bit about just the challenge of crossing. Lindale Avenue, Highway 12 is a pedestrian between, you know, Montana and Last Chance Gulch. We know it's a, it's a pretty big barrier and challenge for pedestrians to cross. It's a four-lane road. There's a lot of traffic on it, and it's really difficult. So right now, if you're familiar with the corridor, there's a marked crossing at Warren Streets that kind of connects over to Memorial Park. It's a very undermarked crossing, I would say. It's probably not what we'd go out there and design and implement today based on the traffic volumes and the road configuration. And so part of what we looked at was, well, do we enhance that location and that crossing location where it's at today? Or do we look for a better opportunity that might be better utilized? And so we actually looked at the Warren Street intersection where it's at today, Ewing Street intersection, which is just a block to the east. And then National Avenue intersection, which is further, further to the east. And this was another area, we had a lot of discussions with MDT, because again, this is their highway. So we wanted to make sure that they were supportive of anything. I can tell you that kind of the Warren Street crossing was kind of on their radar as well about being a bit of a safety concern for that crossing. So they'd kind of looked at that and said, you know, do we need to make improvements here? And in those discussions and our evaluation, we thought it made more sense to shift that crossing to Ewing Streets. Recognizing that there's a little more utilization, I think, that you'd have there. It would also provide a really good location to connect Centennial Trail down Ewing Streets and then down to Helen Avenue too. And I think could make a really great connection for, for bikes and pets. And I think that made a lot more sense than sticking with Warren Street. We did hear from some people that used that Warren Street crossing to say, you know, I like it here because it connects to, you know, right to the park or right to this location. But knowing that, you know, again, this being a highway, we're not going to get enhanced crossings at every location, at every block. We're probably going to have to pick the best location. We felt that Ewing Street made the most sense.
Thanks. And I mean, I think anything that acclimates drivers to the idea that people are going to actually need to process things from time to time. Can't hurt in making them say, oh, hey, I should slow down at Warren as well, or I should slow down at National. Just because we don't prioritize, it doesn't mean it's not important. So maybe then last thing, just a comment, and I'll be quiet, Mr. Mayor. But, you know, I think, I think we should certainly be looking at some of these enhancements this year, this budget cycle with regard to Centennial Trail build-outs at a minimum. Whether it's crossing, whether it's crossing we just spoke about at Ewing. I think we need to look at the one just north of Montana Avenue as well. You know, what slowed down Centennial Trail was funding, but it was also planning. We, we were waiting for this study in part to come out to talk about where to cross Montana Avenue. We had starts and stops with the dust off of the master plan that probably needs to get restarted. If we, if we put a crossing in or we commit to a crossing up at our Guile Bozeman area, that's going to dictate where this trail is going through. We now have the TIF producing more and more money over in the Sixth Ward area, so we have a source to finish out this trail. So it, you know, maybe the theme of the night is long-term planning and how long it takes projects to go from, hey, this is a good idea to concrete actually being poured. But this, this is a, this is a great start, and it would be pretty neat if we didn't do the usual bureaucratic thing and actually execute it on or started the process of a couple of these projects this year, even if they're the low-hanging fruit, small ones. Because that's, that's how y'all build till next year and then the year after that. And seven years from now, you've got something, maybe an underpass under, under the railroad tracks. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. And any other comments for Mr. Randall?
Mayor, I have a few questions as well.
Please go ahead.
So just, I actually want to spend a little bit of time on the first five-point intersection. First, I, one just basic question in the, the new proposed design. Does that still include a traffic light at 11th and Cruz, so just up the hill from that intersection?
So it would not require traffic lights. I think you could go either way with it, whether you completely rip it out and just go with a stop sign along 11th. Technically wouldn't need it. Once you get rid of that, you know, little spur going down to Last Chance Gulch along 11th, you really don't need it anymore. So I think it could go either way. When we looked at it from an evaluation standpoint, from a traffic standpoint, it wasn't necessary.
Okay, thank you. And then just thinking about that intersection and then the, the second, the other five-point intersection at Lindale and Montana. You have both of these in the timeline marked short to long term. And I'm just curious from, you know, if you have recommendations or thoughts on the city tackling one of them first. You know, how that might, how that might change traffic patterns that would have potentially impact the second intersection. Or if, or if there's merit to, to say, focusing some effort on one of these first? And if so, if there's, you know, thoughts on, on which one?
Yeah, I think regarding timing, you know, Commissioner Holliday, you know, kind of hit the nail on the head about, you know, working with MDT and the timing for, for the one along Highway 12. Regarding the timeframe of short to long term, the short term is more related to some, you know, beautification enhancements that could be made. Smaller things such as making it a little more workable for pedestrians, recognizing those opportunities are a little bit limited. But if development happens out there, or if changes are made to some of land uses, there could be some opportunities for that. As far as a full reconstruct of that Highway 12 intersection, I definitely see that as a long term. That, that would take many, many years to complete, you know, outside of that five-year window. So I think that's a long-term vision. The one downtown, you know, I think that's, you know, I think that's something if there's the local support to rally behind, I think that's more doable because it's more driven on the local side. And if there's, you know, the support from the downtown and the other communities that, that could be a part of that. I think that's, you know, that's more achievable in a shorter term. Again, the timeframe on that short to long term, I mentioned a short-term recommendation about maybe if you, if you don't think going to full design for a roundabouts is going to happen anytime soon. Maybe looking at removing that right turn, you know, kind of Pork Chop Island off of Cruz. And making a little bit better, kind of, kind of making do with what you have and making some minor enhancements in the near term. While you work towards something more long-term, or maybe it makes more sense as a community to bite the bullet and go, go bigger, you know, and just work towards that.
Okay, thank you. And then just one question on the Lindale, Montana Highway intersection. So I, I think a lot about the work that Missoula did years, years ago. Related to the intersection of Russell, Brooks and South, where they did ultimately, you know, shut traffic from one leg, the South. And reroute that. I'm just curious, I don't know who ultimately worked on that project, but how that ultimately worked out for them, you know, because I think it is a similar, it's a similar circumstance. And I, and I definitely understand the concerns around the potential of shutting Helena. But have you all looked at how, how it's, how it's worked, you know, in Missoula or other communities where they have done that and rerouted traffic? You know, is it, is it, is it a legitimate concern of those along Helena or that have concerns about shutting down Helena? You know, is that sort of the experience that other communities have had?
Yeah, there's, you know, there's a lot there. I mean, I guess what I would say is, when we looked at options for the intersection, we, we did definitely look at closing Helen Avenue legs and teeing it up as a standard four-legged intersection. I mean, that's been something in the community for as long as I can remember. It's been discussed about, for a long, long time. What I can tell you is closing legs of roads, I mean, traffic's going to find a way. You know, I mean, traffic's like water. It's going to find a path of least resistance. It's going to take it and things are going to flow. And it's ultimately going to, going to work one way or another. The concerns we heard about closing Helen Avenue were less about impacts to traffic and out-of-distance travel and those type of things. And more about kind of recognizing that Helena Avenue is a pretty great corridor. You know, it's, it's this diagonal corridor that kind of splits the town that serves a lot of different areas. And it has a very unique feel compared to Lindale and Montana and some of the other adjacent roads. And so there's a lot of, I think, you know, maybe personal attachments or some sentiment to, to keeping Helena what it is. Recognizing it's an old rail corridor, there's history behind it, and it provides this direct connection between downtown and midtown and everything. And so we just heard a lot of very, I'd say fairly emotional, you know, responses to Helena. Needing to remain open and needing to service is that connection. And so that was a partial driver to our recommendation for the roundabouts. But I can tell you, even, even by closing those roads off, there are still challenges because we would still have to reroute that traffic to, whether it's Boulder and National or whatever it might be, we could probably make it work. You know, any way we choose, there's just trade-offs, and we felt like this kind of balanced what we heard and from a traffic standpoint, what would operate to.
Okay, thank you. And then just one last question, going back to the conversations with MDT. Do we face a greater challenge with, you know, gaining MDT's support with a roundabout? Or in your mind, that, that is, that is not necessarily the focus of their concern? Or I'm just curious, like, is the roundabout going to create more, conceptually more objections from MDT than, say, another design?
No, I mean, I think, I think it's the opposite. MDT is very supportive of roundabouts. I mean, it goes with their Vision Zero message of trying to reduce, you know, fatal and serious crashes, and roundabouts are a proven safety measure. And so basically, at this point, when we do any intersection project, we have to prove that a roundabout's not the best solution without choosing it. And so I, I think when we talked to them and had conversations about all of our options, I mean, we went through all the options that we looked at at this intersection. This was the favorable, favorable one by MDT. So I think, I think that bodes well. I think the challenge is, again, what we kind of mentioned earlier, it's not necessarily in their minds an issue today.
Yeah.
So it's really going to be going from what you have today to something different.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Commission?
From here.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Quick question for Mr. Randall. What did you hear from the folks down in the midtown or the Sixth Ward? Relative to the public engagement and your study?
Yeah, Mayor Commissioners, you know, they were a very vocal group. We met with them multiple times, had a lot of direct conversations with them. I think from their standpoint, and I hate to speak for them, but we do have some of their comments summarized in the report too. But mostly what we heard is they really feel like the existing configuration is just a barrier. Not being able to turn left and to turn into the community off of Lindale is a major barrier for them for their development plans and for their views going forward. And so they were really looking at a solution that can hopefully be implemented in the near term to fix that. You know, we did look at some, a more of a short-term fix about just providing left turn, you know, into their community with the configurations you have, have it today. But operationally, it just, it just does not work, creates a lot of safety issues. It creates major operational issues with having to redo all the signal timing and everything as well, and just would not be supported by MDT. So unfortunately, trying to go into this to look for a short-term implementable solution to improve that access was just not, not viable, not something that we found. And that, I would say that was their biggest concern in, in questions that we heard. Also, lack of support again for closing Helen Avenue, wanting to make sure that that connection was, was made.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comments on this topic? And clerk?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have no hands raised and I've received no written public comment at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I have one more that popped in my head when we were talking about access to the Sixth Ward. Mr. Randall, one of the, one of the tricky things has been this left turn bay onto Boulder Avenue. Off of Montana Avenue. And from my understanding, one of the problems for development of vacant parcels in the Sixth Ward is that businesses looking at them. Look at how cars are going to access. There's questions. MDT has threatened to close that turn bay. turn bay, or hasn't threatened to close it, but won't commit to keeping it open, which might be even worse than just closing it since uncertainty is a problem for businesses. A roundabout or some sort of configuration that allows traffic from the west to flow in there will solve that problem. Were there any discussions with MDT about that turn bay during this process? How it would stay open once it had been floated a long time ago? If the city committed to a project that was gonna get built in seven years, you know, would MDT then keep the turn bay open as a knowing that it's gonna go away in a certain period of time? Anything like that get discussed during this?
It did, yeah, absolutely. I mean, we've we heard kinda some of the rumblings about, about Boulder and especially as we talk about developments and in that cared property. What I can tell you is that MDT does not have any, any plans or any, any views on closing that at this point. We kind of we were under the assumption from some offhand conversations that they were looking to close out if development were to happen. That's not what they, they conveyed to us. They said, no, that they had no plans to do that. It does not, you know, it's not on their radar to close that at all. But I, what I will tell you, and again, it goes back to that system impact process, is that when a development is proposed for that parcel and, you know, when that moves forward through the process of approval, it would have to go through MDT's system impact process. And so at that point, they would review the impacts to traffic on the system and what that would mean for you know, that the highway system and, and what that would function and how that would look. And so I think that evaluation would occur at that time. I don't, you know, I can't say that it would indefinitely remain open or wouldn't. It would really just depend on what that development looks like, how they tie into the adjacent facilities. You know, and basically how MDT would view that. But our conversations with them did not lead us to believe that they have any intent of closing that at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. At this time, we'll move to adopt. I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, I will move adoption of the five-point intersections and quarter connections, multimodal traffic study and its recommendations.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, just as a, a quick reminder, should we take public comment before a vote?
I thought we entertained that, didn't we? Yeah, sure. Do we have any comments from the public on this topic?
I have no hands raised. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may have asked and we got sidetracked, so that's my apologies.
That's fine. No problem.
Commissioner Holliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider acquiring tax lane to begin the tax deed process on property that is necessary to maintain existing access road to Lower Hill Tank. City Manager and/or Director Leland?
Thank you, Mayor Commission. This is a, I'll share for a second. Don't see being able to share it. I'll try one more time. There it is. Okay, this is an opportunity to clear up an existing access that we've had historically since Hail Tank was was built and being used. It is a access road. This is Sparta Street. This is Clancy Street. This is Hale Reservoir. And then the City County Building is down here. This is the big bluff that oversees Cruz Avenue. As you can see here, we have an access road that goes up to, to Hale, Hale Reservoir. And it has been there since it's been built and being used by several of people as a swimming pool, but still as a drinking water system. That was historic, historically used that it used to be done in, in Hale. And it is private property. We do not have a recorded easement on it. It is just something that has been there. And now it has come up that the property owners don't wanna deal with it anymore. They went through a problem of the deed being spread out through heirs. We had the property owner die, go to the heirs and then trying to clean up, up everything and they just no longer want to use it. So they are willing to do it as a sheriff's, sheriff's sale or for the deeds or the tax deeds. So we're just requesting that we clean up an historic, historical use that came available through the tax deed process and that we claim that. And the property owners do not wanna challenge that. There is a letter in the packet stating that. So we'd just like to move forward and and claim that property for the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions that, yeah.
Comments or questions for Director Leland? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands and no written public comment.
Okay. So we, I'll entertain a motion to move forward in acquiring a tax lien.
Mayor, I'd move to approve the request from the City of Helena to begin the tax deed process on property that is necessary to maintain existing access to the lower hail tank.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Holliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution of intention to create special improvement lighting district number three nine nine in the city of Helena, Montana. City Manager Hallashawk and Director Davison.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, I have before us a petition for a creation of a light district. We're naming it Light District Number Three Nine Nine. It was a petition from Northwestern Energy to the city to create the lighting district. It's adjacent to 105 properties north of Road Runner Street and Curlew Street. It's got, includes Blackhawk Street, Blue Heron Street and the northeastern parts of San Piper Loop in the Skelton Addition Phase Two District. About fifteen or more years ago, there were fifty lights that were installed in that area. However, no lighting district was created at the time. Northwestern Energy petitioned the city a couple of years ago, but due to staffing turnover, it has been tabled for a while to bring before the commission to consider the district. And we brought this before the commission at the last commission meeting. However, a staff member of mine noted a couple of errors on the resolution. So I'm bringing it forward to you again this evening with corrected information. And I'm requesting that the commission move to approve the resolution of intention to create district three ninety-nine and for us to move forward with contacting the property owners and letting know the impact of creating the light district. Within the resolution, I also have the, the GIS map of the area in addition to the legal description of the properties and the financial impact of what their assessment would be for the first year of the district and then thereafter. And I am available for any questions at this time.
Thank you, Director. Comments or questions for Director Danielson?
Mr. Mayor, I had two questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
My first one is, I'm curious, where does the the fifteen-day window to protest originate from? Is that in ordinance or where do we get that?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Dean, for the question. That's in the Montana code and it's required when you have a, a creation of a district. It's that protest period that's allowed. It's also required when we're amending a district and there's a, a major modification of the district as well.
And it, just to follow up, it's, I, I'm assuming it's like a minimum or it is fifteen and that's it?
It's a minimum.
Okay, okay. And then, Mr. Mayor, one more question I had was, and I think I probably only answered this. If property owners do have questions, once the communications go out to them about this, are, will they contact your office or who do they contact within the city to learn more?
Commissioner Dean and Mayor, they can contact me directly. That is the letter that's being sent out that they can reach out to me directly, directly. They can also send their protest letter or formal communication to the city clerk's office. And there it's entered into a protest file and public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, from Ms. Danielson. So there's a, a proposed legal ad to provide property owners, residents who would be impacted of the notice provision and they can compute their costs if they know the square footage applicable to them, or they'll be able to find the schedule somewhere. Is that the only method by which we provide notice to the impacted properties or do we do something else?
So we're providing legal notice in the paper. But I'm also sending out each property or an individual letter with the resolution and the information in it. So that they're understanding the impact of the the lighting district to their particular assessments on their tax bills.
Perfect, thank you.
Do we have any other comments or questions from the Commission? At this time, I'll entertain public comments. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no hands raised and no written public comment on this item.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more comment. Or question, excuse me, from Ms. Danielson. So in the packet, it notes as a disadvantage, property owners may determine the creation of the lighting district to be a cost burden. Northwestern Energy will have to continue to absorb the cost of installing and maintaining lights. So can you explain what that means if, if a sufficient number of property owners protested? They, they'd get the district and wouldn't have to pay for it?
It, what happens is the the resolution of intention gets tabled and it can't come forward before the commission for a period of time. And I, I can defer to City Attorney Jordan, but I believe it's a six-month period of time before the resolution of intention that we brought backward to create the lighting district. This is a special circumstance for this particular district because the lights have been there for more than fifteen years and the property owners have not been assessed the cost of the lights. So I do expect that this will come as a surprise to a lot of the owners in that area as it is kind of a, a significant impact. And so if they, if the majority of the, the owners do protest, it does get tabled and the, the resolution will, the resolution of intention will, will not be able to be brought forward back in front of the commission for, I believe, six months. But I can ask City Attorney Jordan to confirm that time.
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Holliday, that's correct.
Thank you. Any final comments from the Commission? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the, to consider a resolution.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Would move to approve a resolution of intention to create special lighting improvement district number three ninety-nine in the city of Helena, Montana, and to set a public hearing date of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments? If not, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Holliday.
No.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll turn it over to the public. Is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, no raised hands, no written public comment has been received.
Okay, we'll give another forty-five seconds and then we'll move forward. Okay, any final comments from the Commission? If not, this meeting is formally adjourned.